All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we just come to you today with grateful hearts. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this city, to be here today, and we thank you for the beautiful weather that you've given us and all the positive things that are going on in this city and this community. Especially pray for those, all of those in attendance today. Thank you for their time, Lord. Bless all those that are watching and listening out there. And, Father, give us wisdom to do your will and to serve this city well. Bless this mayor and this council, Lord, and this meeting, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 21st through 27th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Samir.
I have a proclamation here about the venue at Couso Landing, and I'm going to name several people, companies, everybody was involved in making it really a successful grand opening. So if I call your name out, if you can come up right here and line up, we want everybody to see who you are. The venue at Couso Landing is the city of Gadsden's newest event center. Located on the banks of the Couso River, the venue at Couso Landing is something of which all Gadsden residents can be proud. The open house at Couso Landing was a runaway success, providing an opportunity for thousands of people to see the new facility. People from all parts of our community came together to fellowship and celebrate our community's success. The event would not have been possible without the strong support of a wide variety of organizations and businesses throughout Gadsden and Etowah County. Whereas, we would like to thank Gadsden State Show Band, Dr. Matt Leader, for providing the entertainment. We would like to thank the Gadsden City High School Titan ambassadors for welcoming the guests and providing wonderful hospitality. We would like to thank Abbey's Florist, Atala Florist, Joyce Flowers, Ferguson Florist, Rocco Floral Studio, and Southern House of Flowers providing the beautiful decorations for the event. We also would like to thank the beautiful Rainbow Catering Company, Cape Side Fish Company, Chick Filet, Cochran's Bakery, Ginardas Catering and Event Planning, Little Bridge Marina, Local Joe's Catering, Palmero, Palermo, Italian Grill, Sugar Moon Restaurant and Catering, and Tony's Catering for providing food for those in attendance. We also would like to thank the local general contractor, Chase Building Group, and the various local subcontractors and suppliers who contributed to the project. We also would like to thank the city staff from all departments that helped contribute to the successful open house and the opening of the venue at Couso Landing. We know that the facility will continue to thrive and be a great asset for Gadsden. Whereas, the open house event was so successful, we would like to think we might want to make that an annual event and bring everyone in the community to see what's going on at Couso Landing. Therefore, I Sherman Gaunt and the Mayor of the City of Gadsden hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, the venue at Couso Landing Day in the city of Gadsden.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that, and definitely do appreciate the community coming out and supporting, not just passively supporting, but very actively and notably supporting the venue and the grand opening. I do think it was a great success, and we're just excited. There's a lot of stuff being planned to occupy that facility, so stay tuned. And I hope I hadn't said too much there, but stay tuned. Quite a bit going on. Item number 8A is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for grass cutting on property at 2305 Nakalula Road in District 7. Agatha M. Hamm care of Judy Hamm, Agatha Hamm care of Erica Skidmore, being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 14 days on September 18th. What is the pleasure of the council?
My task will be indefinitely tabled, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table indefinitely.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 194 Brookwood Drive in District 1, Teresa M. Hogg being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Teresa M. Hogg, 194 Brookwood Drive, Gadsden, Alabama, 35903. Okay, it's been brought to my attention about my home in East Gadsden. I had gone to Huntsville to be with my daughter to have medical things done, and while I was there, my home had been the subject of a number of break-ins. And they tore out windows, they took a lot of things in my home, and I eventually, when I was able, I returned to get the rest of my things out of my home. But that didn't stop them from entering my home to live in my home. We have been working on the home. My son lives in Birmingham, he works in Abbeville, 10 to 12 hours a day, six days a week right now. And he's been helping, my cousin has been helping my daughter, and we've been trying to get the house back up to our code. And I had medical issues the first of this year. I had cancer, so I had to go under surgery and everything, so it's been a little difficult for me right now. But it is my intention to bring my house up to code. It's just taking a little bit longer because of the weather issues, my financial issues, my health issues, and the people that we entrusted to help us with my home, they have other people ahead of me, and then there's been a weather factor with them, so that's all I have to say.
Ma'am.
My name is Lakendra Hogg. I'm here to speak on his behalf. Like she said, we had the contractor, all the affordable contractors that we had, everyone had a wait list of two or three, and the contractor that we picked, he still had jobs. My brother, like she said, he's working six days a week. I was working six days a week. We are currently working on it because I guess the company, their calendar year is kind of like the fiscal year for the government, it just ended and started a new one, so we should have more time now in order to bring the house back up to where it needs to be. We've changed windows, because we had to start doing some things on our own while we were waiting on the contractor. We've changed our windows, we've had the roof worked on, and so we're still in the process of getting those things done. We just had other factors, even my brother's wife, she was hospitalized, me and him both, we've had knee surgeries. And so it's just been small factors, but we are working, we are working towards getting the home back, because we do want the home. We just had, just mitigating these factors, that's caused delays.
Two questions. How long ago has it been since you all have been working on the house?
I know my brother, my cousin's been over there, I know within the last, I know month, six weeks. And a lot of things that we would have to do is, because we wouldn't get out until the evenings, we could do some things on the exterior, but those take, those take a long, they're more lengthy in time. So we would do things to bring up the things in the interior on those days, or even when days where the weather was not so good.
Okay, the other question, have you all talked to Mr. Harberson? Have you all talked to Mr. Harberson, the building?
Yes.
The building?
Yes.
You all have communicated with him?
Yes, ma'am.
How much time do you need? And that's just in the event that the council representative for that district is interested in giving you more time, we'll need to understand how much time you think you'll need.
I can't give an approximate time. I would have to, my brother, he's at work right now, and we'll have to get back with the contractor to see his time schedule, and I can provide that.
My son, right now, he works six days a week at Mueller's, and he lives in Birmingham, and he travels to Abbeville and back every day. And right now, he's working 10 to 12 hours. So that's a conflict in itself right there, trying to get everybody together in order to get this done. And with us having surgeries, it's made it a little bit more difficult.
Okay. Well, the concern is that there are people in your neighborhood who I'm quite sure, you know, they don't want, they want everything to look okay, and I'm quite sure that there's been a complaint about it, and that's the reason why it's where it is now. So, you know, if you all can, after, talk to Mr. Harberson, but let's, you know, I'll hear from him first before a decision is made.
All right. How about will a letter be sent out to us as to your decision?
No, when we hear from him, then we'll tell you something.
All right.
As to how long, as to how long you'll be giving us.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harberson. Just to give you the history of this case, we filed it in August of 2017. There've been, I think, a total of four new windows installed in that period of time. There was a building permit taken out in December of last year. Other than that, no improvements. We certainly are not opposed to the house being brought up to code. I would ask that in the next 30 days, if the council chooses to allow this, that all the work on the exterior of the house be complete, should be able to be done without any problem. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm not sure if you caught that suggestion on the part of Mr. Harberson, but would 30 days be sufficient time for you to bring the house up to code? Now, that's a lot different from fixing everything, you know, it's just bringing it up to code.
On the exterior? On the exterior, you might need to ask him exactly what you need to do to bring it up to code within 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, let's start with 30 days first and see how far you go, and then if that's, if there's a, that is something that's been done, then we can look at another 30 days. Let's just do 30 days first.
Yeah, okay. And Ms. Hogg, please understand, what she's balancing is, she's receiving, as well as the building department is receiving, a lot of phone calls. And so they want to help you, for sure, but at the same time, they've got a community that's concerned about a nuisance property. So to her point, you know, if there's sufficient progress in that 30 days, she's in the position to be able to grant an additional 30. Okay, okay. All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table this for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1205 Lancaster Street in District 1, Cliff Heard being the last known owner. If, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, in talking with the owner and looking at the recent improvements, we're asking that this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table it for 30 days.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1423 Paradise Avenue in District 1, Margaret Lee and Ludella Covington being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in May of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1002 Vincent Avenue in District 2, Eagle Corps Ministries of Alabama and Sandra M. Beck being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves some apartments in East Gadsden that have been a source of complaints for several years. We filed our case in June of 2017. They became vacant soon after that. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1002 Vincent Avenue in District 2, Eagle Corps Ministries of Alabama and Sandra M. Beck being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves some apartments in East Gadsden that have been a source of complaints for several years. We filed our case in June of 2017. They became vacant soon after that. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 407 Wilson Street in District 6, State of Alabama and John Carnation being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in January of 2018. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have nine public hearings today regarding assessing liens for grass cutting work that has already been performed. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens on property located at 1203 Lancaster Avenue in District 1, Ralph Otto or Odo being the last known owner. The amount is $196.
Mr. President, this one has been paid, so we can remove it.
Okay, all right, this item's been settled, and no further action is required. Our next public hearing is for property at 313 Henry Street in District 3. Harvard Stevens is the last known owner, and the amount is $316. Is anyone present who would like to speak on this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 1117 Jupiter Street in District 5. Arthurine Love and the Bank of New York Melon Trust Company are the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present who would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 1807 Mount Zion Avenue in District 5, State of Alabama. Joel T. Smith care of Paul and Kathy Allen are the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present who would like to speak about this location? Clerk, will you take the vote?
I move that we adopt the motion.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 3515 Georgia Avenue in District 6. Joe and Amy Ramy, or Ramy, Marcus and Christina Debert, and Regional Land and Development LLC are the last known owners, and the amount is $256. Is anyone present to speak about this location? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, we're gonna, clerk, did we cover item number 17?
Yes.
All right.
Did we do Jupiter?
Yeah.
With item, item number 19, we were made aware today that it was likewise settled, so there's no further action required on it, on this one, and this is the property at 2 Lakefront Avenue in District 6. That's also the case for item number 20. It's at 2 Laurel Road, which is also in District 6. This item was settled as well. For item number 21, our next public hearing is for property at 3108 West Meaggen Boulevard in District 6. State of Alabama, Chastity Jenkins and Justin Shane Jenkins are the last known owners, and the amount is $136. Is anyone present who would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our last public hearing is for property at 100 Lauren Drive in District 7. The State of Alabama and George Wertz are the last known owners, and the amount is $316. Is anyone present who would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 23 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Rafa House. This is for 10-bed units for city prisoners to participate in the treatment program, and the amount is $20,000 for the year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This is a request from the Engineering Department, and I'm asking for unanimous consent. This is where there's authorization agree with sand associated for the completion of the design. This is phase two. Requires-
This is phase two, require to implement the new emergency preempt equipment for selected traffic lights.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
This is just include 12 intersections in the city where the traffic lights, they're doing work on the traffic lights. City engineer.
This is the preemption equipment primarily used by, or right now completely used by the fire department, so when they have a call, certain signals are selected where they get, I guess, the majority of a congestion that would slow down their response time. So this works in conjunction with their equipment, their calls. I believe it's off the top of my head, 12 different intersections, some are city of Gadsden intersections, some are state of Alabama intersections. So we work with the Department of Transportation to implement this. When we do this, it requires certain parameters be designed just to make sure it's done correctly. So essentially, this is a contract that allows me to work with a traffic engineer specializing in this area to make sure that's all set correctly when it's installed.
Thank you.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have one where it's a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien with putting this back on the market. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this goes back on the road as a taxpayer role, and this person has been taking care of this property for years, so it's just a request to satisfy that, so I'm in agreement with that.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one I'd like to ask unanimous consent for, please. It's a resolution authorizing conveyance of property at 426 or 24th Street to Hector Gallardo and Magdalena Andez for $2,000.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move to adopt.
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
I hope I didn't butcher those names up too bad there.
You gotta say it with some spice. You gotta say it, yeah. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, after speaking with the manager of the Gadsden Mall yesterday afternoon, he asked me to convey to you all his apologies. There was some confusion in the invitation to today's ribbon or lasso cutting at Longhorn and just wanted me to extend the invitation. Again, it's today at 2:00 at Longhorn, it'll be opening, and the public is invited to attend as well, so I hope we have a good representation from the, I know we will from the mayor's office, but from the council as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do that include in the food? I wouldn't ask that myself.
I don't mind asking about food, but anyway, go ahead.
All right, Heath?
Yes, sir, just wanted to give project updates. We still have quite a bit going on. I've not gotten to speak about these, so hopefully to answer questions or fill in the blanks if you have any. East Gadsen Community Center contractor is ongoing with work there. It is progressing good. He's got several concrete pours. He's actually completed one large one. He's got, he's almost, he's about to pour his second of three. When he finishes that, basically the floor is poured and done. So next step that you'll see is, or the building components are currently being manufactured. Once that arrives on site, you'll see it go up quick. It'll almost, it'll basically look complete. Inside still needs to be done, so we'll still have several months of work there, but we are meeting on a regular basis. Everything is on schedule pending the materials to arrive, et cetera, so that one's going good. Municipal complex by the Boys and Girls Club, that work is progressing well. The contractor anticipates completion by mid-November. A lot of that is in conjunction also, not related to our project, but certainly a city makes changes to the city. The state is completing their dual bridges right next to that location. That is scheduled to be done by the end of October. Again, not a city project, but it affects every one of us when we travel that way. So once that access is opened up to Boys and Girls Club, that'll help a lot as well. Morana Park, the contractor is beginning to wrap up several items in the park. You'll see the playground surface, the final port-in-play surface is about to be installed, the landscaping is about to be, or additional landscaping with the final touches are about to be installed. So we're right now shooting for completion end of October, 1st of November, certainly that one, as much as any of them, very weather contingent. So as long as the weather cooperates, we feel good about that date. Kuanis Pavilion Parking Lot at the Falls, the pavilion work is complete. As we know, we had that opening. Now, the parking lot extension has officially begun. It started last week, and that goal is to have that work done by Thanksgiving. By the time Christmas at the Falls gets here, we want to be out of the way, want to give everybody a different, or certainly an additional place to park. Chestnut Street, storm sewer replacement work has begun, some of the upfront work on that. As soon as that's done, that'll be the last phase of the paving project for this year. We're at Fifth Street now, which I'll talk about in just a minute, but once that's done, the stretch from South Ninth to South Fifteenth will be complete. We've already done the stretch from South Fifteenth down to Black Creek, and so that just, we'll wrap that section up. On to other paving projects, South Eleventh Street, the Randall to Forest section where the detour is currently in place for. That contractor is actively replacing the broken curbs, the driveways in the first section from Randall Street to Peachtree. The water main portion of that is basically done. Spire has worked with us wonderfully there, getting their old mains out of the way, and they're progressing well also. Once we get through those driveways in that first section, probably in about two weeks, we'll go ahead and pave that section. Once we get through the paving, then the barricades will move north. We just wanted to, while we've got it locked down, go ahead and get it complete, so that's the goal, within hopefully two weeks, again, weather contingent. South Fifth Street, as I said, we have a contractor working on this street literally as I speak. He has begun on the south end of the project, just past Edenwood down in the residential area. He's continuing north and will go all the way to Meagan Boulevard with the exception of a couple of blocks from Locust to Chestnut because that paving's already in good shape. And so they'll continue that nonstop. Hopefully, the majority of that will be completed this week. And then finally, the last stretch that the council had already awarded, the Brook Avenue, Hooks Lake Road, Scenic Drive, and the South Eleventh Street section from Central Avenue to Walnut Park. That's our same contractor that's working on Fifth Street, so as soon as he's done with Fifth Street, he's gonna move right into those projects, and we've initiated for him to start on South Eleventh Street. So hopefully, that's a lot at one time, but hopefully that answers questions that have been kind of floating around or blanks if you have them. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I have one. They've asked me about the gas company. You know, when something happens in another part of the country and you're working on the gas lines, people always worry about what happens in your community. And I try to tell them that, you know, they're doing a pretty safe job because they're out there every day, and I don't know what they're doing, but it seems like you know what they're doing, so that's the main thing, is they know what they're doing, so.
Absolutely. They're actually actively, we've permitted several different projects for Spire now. They moved in, it wasn't on their books to do yet, but they did go ahead and move in the South Eleventh Street section that we're working on from Randall to Forest. They had an older main there. Wanted to go ahead and get it taken care of, which we're very happy to permit and get out of the way. They're working in East Gadsden, they're doing some other work in other, you know, downtown, some other areas, but yeah, they actively go through and try to upgrade their infrastructure on a regular basis. They have several contractors that come in. We permit those, work with them, and yeah, as far as we can tell, everything is tip-top.
Heath, is it safe to say that all of the contractors are complying with the notice requirements that are a part of their agreement with the city?
Yes, sir, as far as we know, we do require that. In fact, I was on a project yesterday on Fifth Street, looking at some of the initial stages of that construction, the flyers were in his hand. We try to get ahead of that as much as possible and certainly do apologize for inconveniences that does cause. When folks are, for instance, on a paving job, they park on the street, we've certainly got to get them to move their vehicles to be able to complete that process, with the intent to get out in front of it, get the flyers out there. Certainly, there's some hiccups, no doubt, along the way, but yes, sir, as far as I know, everyone is complying with it.
Okay, thank you.
And I did hear you reaffirm Scenic Drive, and that's gonna make us all happy.
That is absolutely correct. Scenic Drive is in that next project.
Scenic Drive.
Those who say nothing's going on must be on another planet.
All right. Well, Heath, Shane, we appreciate that, but I have to save the best for last, so, Alva?
Well, I'm gonna talk about the election, Mr. President. I have a few announcements to make. First of all, just to clarify for everybody, the city's runoff election is coming up next Tuesday, a week from today, October the ninth, and the runoff involves two races. One is the mayor's race, which is citywide. The other one is District Five Council seat race, which is limited to District Five voters. The deadline for requesting absentee ballots for this election is this week. It's gonna be Thursday, October the fourth, and on that day, our office remains open until 5:00 p.m. so that we comply with state law in giving people ample opportunity to apply. If you don't have an application, one is available on the city's website. You can download it. The web address is www.citofgadsden.com, and you choose City Services, then City Clerk, and then Absentee Voting to get that application form. There are several reasons that people, that voters may apply for an absentee ballot. I'll just give a quick rundown on those. Being out of the county or state on Election Day, physical illness or infirmity, working a shift of 10 hours or more that coincides with our polling hours, being a student at an educational institution that's located outside the county, member, spouse of a member or a dependent of a member of the U.S. Armed Forces, or if you're appointed as an election officer or named as a poll watcher at a polling place other than your regular polling place. That's, those are the six reasons. And speaking of polling places, I wanted to remind everyone about the polling places that the city uses for its elections. There have been a couple of recent changes made by the county for the county and state and federal election, the one that's coming up in November. At this time, the city has not changed any of the city's voting locations. So on October the ninth, and I'm just gonna read these very quickly for the public information, we are going to be voting at the Antioch Baptist Church Family Life Center, the community building at the Starnes Park Housing Community, the East Gadsden Community Center, Thompson Community Center, the former Gadsden High School and the lunchroom there, Carver Community Center, and at Wallace Hall, they are currently doing renovations on the hall itself. So we are in room 144, and that's just down the hall in the academic wing at Gadsden State, Metta Brook Baptist Church Family Life Center, Convention Hall, the Tabernacle, and we're voting in the gym at the Tabernacle, Elliott Community Center, Walnut Park Community Center, and the Kuanis Pavilion. So those are the locations, and the polling hours will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
All right, thank you.
I have a question about the polling places. I got a couple complaints at Starnes Park and at Tabernacle. Even though it's an election, the people, they said, people at Starnes Park told them they had to get off the property from campaigning, you know, they said they had 30 feet, but they made them get off the property completely there and at the Tabernacle. So can you explain that?
I'll be glad to. Starnes Park is a housing community, and so it's governed by federal rules and regulations, and campaigning is not permitted anywhere on that property. So at Starnes Park, anyone that's campaigning or giving out sample ballots, that kind of thing, has to be completely off the property. The Tabernacle is privately owned, it's a church, and when property is privately owned, then the owner can say, they have a say in what happens or doesn't happen on their property as well.
Thank you, Alva, for those points of clarification. Any additional questions as it relates to any of those announcements? Okay, remarks by the mayor and councilman? Mayor? Councilwoman Toz?
I'd just like to remind everybody that October is Breast Counsel Month, so I'm sure there'll be coming, people that will come and recognize, but just let you know that this is Breast Counsel Month, be aware.
Thank you. Mr. Echols?
Yes. I know I sound like a broken record, but I've been here for eight terms, 32 years. I want to thank all the people in East Gadsden and renowned Rainbow Drive that voted for me in all those elections. I only had one runoff. So I think I've shown that I'm a little bit of a politician. Today, I'm not running, so whatever I say is not political, is it, I hope? But listening this morning to all the things that are going on in this city, and anybody can say that this council or this government has not done anything is beyond my understanding. We've done more than any that I've had in the eight terms I've been here. So it's important that you go vote. Don't just sit around and wait. You're gonna get through, you're gonna find that you wind up with somebody you don't want. That happens all the time because people don't go vote. Please, please, go to the polls and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Councilwoman Worth?
Yes, I got an announcement to make. This Saturday, October the 6th, we're gonna have a Fall Fest Block Party in 800 block of Tuscaloosa Avenue. We're gonna have blocked off from 8th to 9th Street. We're gonna have Bill Avery, he's gonna play, we're gonna have a couple DJs, it's from 4:00 to 7:00. So if you don't have anything to do, come on out, bring your chairs, and we're gonna have a good time, gonna have a couple DJs also. Then, speaking of football players, I was able to go see Drake Kirkpatrick over the weekend. They played Atlanta, the Falcons, and that stadium is magnificent, and the prices for food is really cheap compared to other stadiums. It's been voted the number one stadium in America because the owner told them to slash the prices of food. So you can go in and you can eat good at a reasonable rate, you know? That stops a lot of people from going to these stadiums, and, but man, hey, we had a good time. They partied the whole game, and it was, man, we had a great time. And I just want to thank his board for letting me tag along, his nonprofit board for letting me tag along over there with them, and actually Cincinnati won, come back, it was a good game, won by one point, so, thanks.
All right. Councilwoman Billis?
No, I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Kent?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Reed?
Having to say, the cost of food in the NFL is not the reason I quit watching them. Appearance, huh? Be sure and go vote. The biggest excuse in the world was I forgot. Well, there's no reason to forget. Mark it down in your book, ask your neighbor, just wake up that day, you'll know to go vote. Go vote, October 9th.
All right, just a couple announcements. Again, I'll reiterate, I'll reiterate...
I'll reiterate the Breast Cancer Awareness Month announcement. Please remember that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and real men wear pink, so be certain that you, in support of that month, that you wear pink, and you'll notice Councilwoman Toz has her pink on today, so we want to encourage everybody to wear pink in recognition, and it's about awareness. That's what the pink designation is and the ribbons...
That's what the pink designation is, and the ribbons that you see. It's just about bringing awareness to the cause. Again, reiterating that the election is next Tuesday, the 9th. Please, please, go out and vote. We've got our mayor's race and the District 5 race on the ballot, wish Mayor Guyton and Councilwoman... Councilman Billingsley the best of luck, and let's go out and vote. Please go out and vote. The last thing I have here is an announcement regarding next week's meeting. Due to the city's runoff election on the 9th, next week's city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 10th. The work session will begin at 10:00 a.m., and the council meeting will begin at 11:00 a.m. If there's a...
Where's the council meeting?
It'll be here.
Monday.
Next Wednesday. Next Wednesday, yeah. Be the day after the election.
We in October.
Again, to avoid any confusion, Wednesday, October 10th, 10:00 a.m. pre-council, 11:00 a.m. council meeting. All right? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.